Good evening. I now call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. We have everybody in attendance tonight, and I think the second thing on our agenda is to do the agenda review. Can I have a motion regarding the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as published. I'm assuming no discussion, so let's call the roll.
Janet? Yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Third on the list is the superintendent report, and we have guests with us tonight, so we're gonna, obviously, it's in the order to go first so that we honor our guest time. Scott?
Yep, ready to go, and I'll just wait for Daniel to pull up the presentation. While we're doing that, I wanted to introduce our four teacher leaders who have agreed to come in and kind of share their experience with the work that we've been doing. And so we have Terran Wald, Scott Smills, Ben in Terran's classroom many times. If you ever want to see what it feels like to be a part of a classroom community, that's where you want to be. Megan Leermann also, you know Megan's work. Erin, I know you see you nodding and love being in Megan's room. Benson Short is one of our teachers at Sequoia. Doing incredible work. And this is Benson's first year as a certified teacher. Is that correct, Benson? But Benson's done all kinds of other really fascinating things. And Clarissa Bay from the Social Studies Department is here.
Science.
Sorry, sorry. This is our second presentation of the day. We're in Eugene before that. Clarissa Bay, science, physical science, right? Yes, got that. And they're here to sort of share their experiences. So today, tonight, what we're going to talk about is what our teachers have been doing by way of assessment. So the assessment piece is really critical because we want to distinguish what it is that we expected kids to know, but how we know if they learned it? Because there's a huge assumption in between. And we need to dial down on our assessments to make sure we can form an action plan after that, determining, you know, what's the best move for our cohort of kids or kids maybe who didn't take it up the first time. And so one of the things I want to be really clear about is that in education, we are really good at talking about stuff. So you'll hear a lot of superintendents say, "Yeah, we do that. We do that, Scott. We do all that." And then you ask them to show you evidence of that, and they're not doing it. And so that's what makes us really unique here in Silver Falls, to take sort of this work to a systems level. And that's what we're trying to do here going into our third year. And because the talk will not get us to better student outcomes. And now is the time. This work was important pre-pandemic, but all of our kids have a gigantic hole in their learning. I would say the kids who are best off right now are kind of brothers because they missed all that. But everybody else has to come up through having missed a fair portion of their K-12 experience. And so what we want to share with you here is exactly what work our teachers have been doing by way of assessment. They just went through the 30-hour, four-day assessment cadre. This is cadre number two. At this point, I think we have 85 certified teachers out of our 220 that have been formally trained in standards-based assessments, so we're getting to that tipping point. And I just want to review what this process looks like. So in educational ease, we start with a common core standards, then we break it into targets, and then we figure out how we're going to assess that, and then we decide how we're going to teach it. So we're in that backwards mapping. But to put this in plain English for you or in layman's terms like I need, it's simply what do we expect kids to learn? And then once we've identified that, how do we break it up into systematic chunks? So we take it one step at a time, whether you're teaching a quarterback how to throw a ball, or you're teaching a lesson in physical science, we break it down into small chunks so kids know what's expected of them along the way. And then we determine how to know if they've learned it. And then we start planning instruction backwards to that. Today, I gave a, we gave a presentation on hiring, and it was all about starting with a theory of action. Because you have to set the priority first, the standard proficiency standard first, and then backwards map the entire process. Because otherwise, the proficiency bar shifts here and there depending on how the kids are doing. And so it's really a critical part. I also sent you an email on sort of some examples of standards and targets. So take a look here. What do you see, Owen? What's the first thing you see?
First thing I see is a bird.
Me too. I think that might be because we share the same hobby. Jonathan, what did you see?
I saw the bird, too.
Did anybody see a bunny? You saw a bunny, too? Okay, good. Honestly, I didn't see the bunny until I had a little couple of times. But we put up this example because once you've gone through the work of taking a standard and breaking it down into chunks that kids can easily digest called learning targets in their own language, and then you've gone through assessment cadre to unpack what that assessment would look like to get at those targets, once you've seen it, you can't unsee it. That's the power of this work. That is a true power, and you have to do the work to be able to understand it. And our friends will talk to you about their experience. So the reason why we need a common assessment in this district, and I'm not talking about OSAS scores and all that, that's for all of you. But nobody else uses those scores. And we will get to a place where we're not using them either because they're high-level, they're for policymakers, they're umbrella data, but right now, it's really all we have because we can't use screening data like STAR. That's not aligned to standards. So that's just giving us a norm reference on how kids are doing, generally speaking. But it doesn't assess what it is that we actually taught. And I'm not saying I don't care about state report cards and state testing and all that, but if we focus on this work here, all that will take care of itself, I guarantee you. But the reason why we need standards-based common assessment is I see too much of this in my career. And, you know, down here, we see the antecedents, the causes, and then we see whether or not they were effective. And I see a lot of this. Either people are losing ground, they did poorly, they have absolutely no idea why they did poorly, or even worse, in my opinion, students are doing really well, which was rampant in the district I came from, even though I still love them. But this was rampant, that our kids are doing really well, but we have no idea how that's going on. We have no idea why that's happening. We can't pinpoint it. And that for us is a real issue that we don't, we don't ever want to be in the bummer corner, or we don't ever want to be on this side. We always want to be here because we want to know what works. If it doesn't work, it's going. We're not keeping it. If it does work, we're going to do more of it, and we have research to guide us. But the reason why we can't be here is because we deal with people. We're people-driven business with kids, with our teachers and staff, and so it's not an exact science. It just isn't. And we would never try to put a number on a child. You know, some respond to different things. And we have to figure out and nail down what works for us. And the way that we do that is through a common language, a common language of assessment and assessment results because it'll then pinpoint where it is that the kids missed the learning and assess our own, our own learning along the way and how we taught. So this is an example that I'm going to leave up here. So just know, we're going to get to this piece. I'm going to turn it over to Leslie in a minute because I'm going to want you to make a, well, however you describe it, Leslie, are we going clockwise?
Yes.
Yes? But I want you to take a look at, you're going to have to take a look at each section, one, two, three, four. Now, I don't expect you to regurgitate back to me what was taught at assessment cadre. I'm not asking for that. But I am asking you to critically think. So coming from your spot and where you are, whether you're a business owner or director of nonprofit, or a teacher, or so on, I want you to take a look at these visuals of the work that our teachers actually did. This is all their work. They marked all this up here. And I want you to make some connections. And so to do that, to make it easier for you, on your paper in front of you, we have some scaffolding. That would be an instructional strategy. Scaffolding is just a fancy word for support. So that you have some sentence starters or some questions, some questions and some sentence starters. Also good strategy that we use, especially for English language learners. But so you'll have time to go over these questions, and all I, while we're looking for is one response for each, so three responses from each of you. So if you want to familiarize yourself with that right now, and we are going to come back and talk about what it is that you've seen, this is all feedback from the 30-hour assessment literacy training two weeks ago. And I already sent you the entire body of feedback forms in my Friday updates to you, so you have them all. And hopefully, you've just kind of gone through those and seen some of the themes is what we're looking for. Leslie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, so we're going to do a gallery walk today, and a gallery walk is a teaching strategy that we often use to share information, exchange ideas, or to prepare for discussion. So that's kind of what we're doing tonight. So I have, I'm going to put you into partner groups, and you're going to go through each station and review the poster, think through the three questions, and when you're finished or after two minutes, I'm going to give you the signal to rotate to the next part. So you'll have a chance to review all of the posters. And Scott, Dan, and I will all be adjoining you in your groups as well. So you'll have a resource that you can use if you're not quite sure what you're looking at. So my groupings this evening, at station one, which is the, Scott's going to flip back to the other screen.
Aye.
Screen two. So at that station.
Daniel, help.
Daniel, we need some technical assistance.
We'll have a move of that.
The screen is going to be Dan, Lori, and Tom.
Thank you, thank you.
Over here next to the laptop is going to be Scott, Jonathan, Erin, Jennifer, and then in the middle will be myself, Janet, and Owen. Okay? So go ahead and move to your locations and review your first set of posters, and I'll tell you when to rotate.
And I feel free to ask our four teacher leaders here, you know, their thoughts on that as well.
Well, along with Janet said, too, just noticing the little pieces that there's progress throughout the whole learning workshop, right? Now, some may have had, you know, where they came in maybe kind of knowing some of the ideas, and they were like, "Yeah, I'm ready to just throw this in, incorporate it in tomorrow," to, "Well, I'm feeling a little better, but you know, I'm not all the way there." We just talked about over here at our last meeting, they've made progress.
Yes.
From here, it may not be from here all the way, and everybody's at the end, but everybody's made progress, and that's the important thing.
It is.
Because it's going to take time.
Yep. We take everyone where they are, just like we do with our students. We'll take you where you're at. And then we'll accelerate your learning from there.
Are the data points constantly a part of each station that we visited? Is that part of?
Well, I think.
Assessment or your learning targets? I saw those data points, and I didn't know if that was more internal for you to know for each student.
Well, this is just, this is adult feedback.
Oh, okay.
From, from our trainings around assessment. So that's, you're seeing all teacher-generated feedback.
Oh, okay.
On their learning. Who else needs that?
I'll share. One of the things that I noticed, a lot of this tracks what I'll call migration of knowledge through those four days. I'm curious, maybe I'll ask the teachers, not so much the knowledge side, but the perception side. Did people start out thinking a bunch of hoo-ha, whatever, at the end? What did they think? Right? I guess that's my question, right? Was, was there also a transition in terms of perceived value?
I think there was. I mean, I can use myself as an example. I went in the summer one, it's like, "Ah, I gotta come back." But by the end, it was actually really good.
Good.
Valuable. My team actually put in a little bit extra time after cadre was done just to finish the work, and there's just all the value in it.
And I believe, Megan, your team is done.
We are.
Yeah, that's huge. That's amazing. So they're done with the projection unit mapping, and now they have all their assessments mapped. They're all six, eight kids will be taking.
And that's all middle school math, correct?
SMS and all of our K8s. And the first assessment's coming up soon, right?
We're actually finished two.
Oh, okay.
We're getting ready to start our third unit.
Sorry, your third, okay.
Yeah, very cool. Did the rest of you see the same thing? What were your perceptions of how it was seen as valuable, et cetera?
You kind of go into it with a little, a little skeptic mind, not knowing what to expect.
I would.
And it's a, it's a lot of information. You're in information overload for a couple of days, but then you get to see the real value in it, and you get to work with people and bounce ideas off of each other. And I think that's really powerful.
I think my experience was, I went with a very new team for physical science, and so I was there with someone who had worked on the projection map but didn't do any of the unit maps. But then for us to build our assessments around our learning targets was, it was a huge experience for us, and just kind of, we were eager to be there. And so we had a positive, we were ready to go when we got there. So I think that was, we were just positive the whole time. It was great, so.
Yeah, fantastic.
Yeah, and I think from Sequoia that we had, we had a good idea of what we were stepping into because of the work that we already were doing. But we went there looking for some specific tools that I think that we were lacking, some way to communicate and to do assessment in a way that we knew was not just, not just the way that we were developing it ourselves, but was best practices and would meet the standards. And so for us, it's an extremely, it was an extremely useful time, and it will be a useful tool that we will use for years. So it was worth it.
Thank you.
And we can get more in depth with questions when our team comes up here.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 it's totally fine, Jonathan. Who was next? So don't lose.
Oh, I was just going to say that there's clear evidence that ideas are being processed that will lead to more student agency. When we are really clear about our targets and really clear about the assessment, that gives students a chance to be in control and to be able to, yeah, have agency over their own, their own learning and the outcomes.
I just noticed data all, all the way through, you know, how you're always checking in, what, you know, seeing how the, the group of teachers is, the, the group of attendees are, you know, absorbing the data in the training.
I just had a follow-up question for Megan. Megan, your team is six through eight across the district. That's a big wide team, and had that team ever worked together before?
Two years ago, we had a mixed group, I think it was two years, maybe three years ago, of middle school and outlying schools. And that was one of the things that I actually really appreciated, even asking for it for a few years to come back together. Because it kind of feels like we're on two different islands, but we're trying to work together. So just meeting with the middle school teachers and the outlying schools, but also having the high school there was really important to us. We really liked the curriculum we're using. They already have really great tests that we're able to tweak. But when we were looking at how we're scoring and why and those expectations, it was really nice to even go up to the high school level and be like, "Okay, when they come, what do you need them to know? What can we do to help support that so that we could add those pieces back into the assessment and our teaching?"
I, I think that's a really important bit about, you know, Scott's been talking about when we hired him, he said, you know, "I think Silver Falls should be a school district, not a district of schools." And that is a huge piece of this work, is getting better together and moving forward together. We have lots of talented individual teachers, and how much better will we be with this teamwork that's going on?
Anything that you're wondering about? On what you saw?
I'd say that there were, there were some comments made in the feedback about needing more time.
Yes.
More time to process. So will there, I was wondering if there would be opportunities for groups to continue to work and sort of hone their expertise in this. This is probably a one and done.
Right. Yeah, that's the beautiful thing about having a, the professional development framework that we're investing in, which is job embedded professional development. And we have some extra duty work, and then we also have our early release time, but Leslie, I'd like you to speak.
Yeah, at the end of each cadre, each team emails me and says what they've gotten done and what their plan is to continue. And so some teams, like Megan said, her six, eight team said, "We want to meet again." And I offered to time card or sub out teachers who needed to meet and complete assessments. And so they did that. They were able to get all of their assessments done. And then they had another team, so there was three teachers who went in August, and two more teachers just went in October, also from six, eight math, and they were able to start like tier two differentiated assessments. So, and now that team, they have a, we have a few more middle school teachers who still need to go, and they're going to go to an upcoming one, and they'll take over where that group left off. So that's, that's how we've been rolling this out with our cadre, but each team has been able to get back together and work on assessments with either extra duty time or subbing out to complete what they've started. And then as Scott said, we, I've just posted some extra duty instructional coach positions, and they're going to go through a training with our consultation firm, Educational Excellence, and learn how to audit assessments so that we can start that work of transitioning with, from our consultants to internal and having our own experts in-house who can take over some of the overseeing of this work.
That's the whole key, is the transfer of, of learning and knowledge into our system, and then we say farewell to, to those who helped us get here, and we now make it our own as a school district.
I was just wondering, like, you know, for those who have gone through the assessment cadre, maybe feel like, "Okay, I'm getting this, but I'm not fully grasping this."
Yeah.
What kind of follow-up or pressure, or maybe there's extra coaching that goes on with some of the teacher leaders that are maybe stronger with this? Is there some follow-up that has been planned for those that maybe just need a little bit more, more help?
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I think that our internal instructional coaches will be able to do that work as their, what auditing means when we're auditing an assessment is a group of teachers completes an assessment, and then we have our coaches go through and check to see if it aligns with the standards they say they're teaching to, and gives the team feedback for improvement or says, you know, "This is great. We're going to finalize it, and this will become our next district-wide assessment." So that team will be able to come and work with a group of teachers on the assessment if they're struggling and need support. And then, of course, we always have our coaches right now as well through EdX that can come along and do that work right now.
So they're always available to teams. And during early release, they're just a phone call away. So teachers can be in their teams and get right away on speaker or whatever they need to do. So we are, we are coordinated that way. But the key is to take all of that knowledge and have it here in-house. Because we cannot survive just having others come in to do everything for us. We need to sustain that for a long time. One of the things I, I hope that you take out of this visual here, because we're looking at things from a broad picture, you as a board and me as a superintendent. So right here, what we should really be concerned with is, are we moving this cohort of teachers forward in their learning? That may seem really simplistic. That is actually very hard to do from a leadership standpoint. And so that's the question I want you to, to really, really have down, that are we making progress as a system from when we start and then to where we end? Where we start and then where, and where to begin? Are we focusing our resources in the right place? It would be a whole nother thing if I sat up there in that chair and told you all about what we're doing, and you just took me at my word. It happens everywhere. It happens in every school district. But you've got to see where the rubber meets the road here, and I hope that that's come out, and that you've been able to interact with that a bit. All right, just a few more slides, and then I want our friends to come up. But let's back up a little bit and think about what the big picture things are to allow us to do this work. And we've talked about infrastructure. And when I've talked about infrastructure, I've talked about frequent, regular, early release at a minimum on a weekly basis. And so I really want to make sure that I publicly thank our association and their collaboration through this. It was absolutely a team effort. I am so grateful for my role, but I know I speak for all of us, that this was absolutely critical. If we did not have this, we would be stuck back here. We cannot ask teachers to do something that we're not providing the time for, and it's never enough time. It won't, it's never enough time. Our teachers need more time, not less. But it is a start. And so now we're able to figure out plans, and the operative word here should be team and feedback. And that's the reason why it's in our focus for, for this school year, teamwork and feedback. Those are the two powerful things that set us apart from everyone else doing this work. And so now we can be here. Now we have time to figure out learning and assessment and the relationship between the two. And having said that, I'd like, we can have our friends come up, come up here, and. It'll be fun. I promise. I promise. They're really nice.
I'm not used to sitting.
They're really nice.
It's weird.
Fun. And so the directions, what we just want to know, and the directions that Leslie gave, were not rigid at all. We simply wanted them to have a chance to share what they went through and their own experience so you could hear straight from them. I'll turn it over to you guys.
Okay. Since I'm the, I'm the first one up there.
Well, I'll start by saying that I was tasked with this work at a previous district, and was just basically said, "Here, go do this," with no support whatsoever. So I'm very thankful that we get the opportunity to get support from the experts, and I think the EdX coaches are fantastic. They have supported us the whole time, and they're very organized and have led us the entire way. Plus, they're quite entertaining, I feel like. They're really good with analogies, those people. But I just have really appreciated everything that they've done for us. This year was kind of new for me. I stepped into a new grade level and brand-new curriculum and a brand-new PLC team. So when I went to assessment cadre, I'd never met with my PLC team before. So that was something new also, was just trying to get to know who I was working with in the first place. But we just jumped right in, and I think we were all, one, kind of anxiously anticipating what was going to happen. And like I said earlier, you know, the first couple of days, you're really just getting a ton of information, but the EdX coaches are great about acknowledging that and then helping you work through it. And our team, I feel like, worked really well together. We got through three of our six assessments, creating those together. And like I said, for that being the first time that we had ever actually met together, we were pretty excited about that. And now, meeting in our early release time meetings, it's been really awesome to see how it's all kind of working together, how the projection maps and the unit maps are working together. And then we just finished our first unit assessment and moving now towards the second unit assessment. And I think it's nice to just kind of have a clear path of what's to come, kind of like what that picture was showing us. You know, now that we can work together, we can kind of see where we're going, and we're not all going in separate directions. So that's been really awesome.
Oh, Megan. Or actually Megan.
We're going out of order now.
I feel uncomfortable with going out of order. We'll just go in order. Well, we had a similar experience just in being with a new team. I think at the beginning of when we first went on our COVID leave, initially, I started a master's program, and part of it is looking at science assessment. So what's been very nice for me is that as I'm going through that master's program, we've been doing all of this work as well, so the projection maps, unit maps, and then looking at different ways to assess. You're talking about data points that you see, and at the high school level, those data points are critical to see, are we going to meet the different markers that our kids need so by the time they sit for the SAT or the ACT, are they ready to read those complex questions and do better? So sitting at the assessment cadre was really helpful. I kind of started in the middle, but my team of three, we had a beginning teacher and another teacher that has written assessments before. And what we found was we had to start all of our assessments from scratch just because we weren't doing justice to the students when they'd be taking.
just because we weren't doing justice to the students when they'd be taking them. And our team just gave our first very standards-based assessment and they asked the kids for feedback. And the kids were like, this was so much better than our first test. And they just appreciated it. There was just, you know, the scan trons are wiped away and we're asking them to perform and do things on their assessments, which I think is good. And it's, it was helpful just to see, like, I teach a college level class. I have no say in those assessments right now, but there's goals. But just how can I prepare the kids for those assessments? Because they're difficult and they, they have a lot of faults to them. So what can I do to help them be better?
Can I ask a question? At the test, you said it seemed like the kids were responding better. Do you feel like that they had a better, clearer expectation of what is going to be expected of them on the test because of the way we're doing this now? Or is that what you kind of felt like it was better with the kids or?
I think part of it is the standard, standards-based assessments. You're breaking the test down into sections. And so when the kid's taking the assessment, they look at it and they're like, this section is going to be about the atom. Okay, think of the atom. And then all of their answers are going to be, they know that's what it's going to be. And then it goes to another section. And so it's now about molecules and they're, everything's about that. So the kids, they don't have to be going back and forth and processing different information. It's all linked. And then we have our standards in our classrooms. And so they know as we go through instruction, everything is specific and for a purpose.
So their brains aren't all over the place?
Yep.
Which is great. Okay.
Real streamlined.
Do you think Clarissa, that it was like, what I think of from the training with what you're describing, is the difference between like that, that poster back there, the formative versus the summative?
Yes.
Do you feel like that's like what you're seeing in real time in the classroom is opportunities to do, to gain lots of information before you ever do like any type of a final test? So that you have a good idea of how much information they have, how much they're retaining before you even get there?
Yeah.
Because I thought that was really good. That was really good for me.
Well, they kept calling it epic assessments, which it was no assessment along the way. And at the end, we have an epic assessment that's like a hundred million multiple choice questions and you never know what it's going to be about. And it kind of is making you sweat right now because you're thinking, I remember those tests. So this way, you're asking kids like every week, every day, or you're asking them questions. So you already know by the time, even for my last test, by the time it came around, I knew what they were going to struggle with before the everyone got there. And so it helps you to prepare for that. Yes, no more epic assessments. Taking them away. That's the SAT, right?
Yeah. Oh, my goodness. Well, yeah. And I think we, we see that a lot at Sequoia. Like if we try and do a summative kind of test, oftentimes it means that, in our world, it means that students aren't going to show up on those days. They're just going to disappear at the end of a term because they think that there's a, a big final that's coming. And they're really, they're, they're sweating bullets over it.
Yeah.
You know, so to build that in where you're already looking at the standards and you're already collecting data and information as you're ever moving towards the end of a class, maybe I've even gotten all the information to say where their proficiency is at on the standards weeks before even the end, is just a great opportunity to decrease their stress around it. So in our world, that's, that's a fantastic way to look at things.
Well, and that's what I was going to mean about like control and agency. It's like the student has way more control over that situation and that's going to, you know, make your mental health a lot better.
Well, and it helps them too at the end where the assessments are written in a way that they're giving you information, but they're also, you know, how does this relate to anything else that I'm doing in my life right now? So it's, it's better assessment, better information that they're giving of what they actually know and how they're going to use it.
Yeah. All right. Well, so I came over to Silver Falls last year from, from another district I'd been at for 20 years. And mostly what I did there was behavior intervention training and student threat assessment. And so being in the classroom at Sequoia has just been, has been awesome. It's been a great experience for me. And I've enjoyed being a part of this district. And I think that what really stood out to me, or a couple of things that, that I think about, is that we already were talking about and working really hard. I kind of, Jonathan, you kind of jumped the gun on my, on what I was going to say, which was great. We already were looking at standard-based proficiency. And that's how we do our grading. That's how we think about building out our classes. And what, what I think we, we didn't have, you know, and then again, I referenced the, the pictures behind us. We didn't have a really clear key sometimes for assessment. And so I'm, I'm really excited. We, in the week that we were there, the four days that we were there, I think we got through four classes where we were able to do all of the, you know, get the assessment ready for it, look at the standards, kind of outline things. And for us, that assessment piece is going to help us. It already is helping us to really think about moving towards those standards and how we are going to get students to move in that direction. And really the, the key for it, for us is breaking things down into smaller scale. And so, yeah, it's, it, it was great. And for me being kind of, you know, last year being my first year teaching in the classroom, it's been, it's been wonderful to have an additional training. I'm also going to say, and I shared this with Leslie, like, I really enjoyed the snacks. And I really enjoyed the location. It was, and, and I really enjoyed it because it kind of set the, I feel like it set the table for us to really, and everyone here has hit on it, to be able to interact with people in addition. So there were multiple times where I, I was stuck trying to figure something out. And I, and I went over to another teacher and said, hey, you're, you're doing social sciences, right? Like, what do you think about this? Where are you seeing this? And, and to me, that's a huge thing. And it's something that the opportunity for collaboration in that setting is going to lead to increased collaboration just throughout the lifetime of my time here. Because I now know people that I can reach out to and ask questions. And I've already done that a couple of times and it's been great, you know, so, yeah, it was good.
I have to agree on that collaboration part. Because like to work with English teachers and see, how are you having the kids write this type of a paper? Oh, I can totally do that in science too. And so that collaboration was key.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. And we share a lot of students that maybe are, maybe are behavior-related or, or are struggling in, in like SHS. And it's nice to have a bridge outside of behavior too, to be able to, you know, like you and I have had students that we've shared.
Right.
And we've always talked about behavior. And now we have a little bit more language to talk about where they at as far as like assessing them.
Yes.
It's good.
Going off the collaboration, another part that was really important, not even with the high school, the middle school, even just the middle school together, is talking about depth of knowledge and how much rigor we're putting in and expecting each of our students. We kind of all knew that we were on different playing fields, but then when we came together, it was very eye-opening how different we all were, even though we thought we were doing the same. So that was huge. And our team spent time just writing out norms just for the next groups. Like, here's what we were thinking. This is why. Please make sure that when you do it, you're following kind of the same trajectory so that we have cohesive pieces of work to use. One of the reasons why we did ask Leslie if we could have time was we felt, okay, so our team's on a roll. We did six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight, just over and over with the units. If we didn't get all the way through, I think by the time the cadre was done, we got through seven of the 10. So another group's going to come and they're going to pick up where we're at, but they haven't had the same norm talk and everything. So we felt it was really important that at least for the first Form A test, that we all have the same continuity of thought on going to each of those tests. And then they could pick up with either a tier or a retake test, a Form D, performance tests, performance tasks rather. But that was huge for us. Another piece, when going through and looking at, okay, this was looking at this standard and that standard, not only depth of knowledge, but the type of question that was being asked. We found that a lot of the questions that we normally asked could have been even, went to a deeper level of thinking and put into more of a performance task instead of asking them to do it in a one-class setting with some depth of knowledge two or threes. So that was huge for us as well.
For the board, Megan, could you stretch out a little bit what a DOK is for us as educators?
So like depth of knowledge, one would be like retail recall. And as you go down through the different depths of knowledges up to the fourth one, the fourth one would be like a performance or a synthesis of that into a different situation. So a lot of times standardized tests are more like ones and twos. And then tests that normally come with like a curriculum would be like depth of knowledge two and three. And just making sure that we're staying with those upper levels. If you don't ever test at a depth of knowledge three or four, you're not fully hitting the standard. So just being careful that we're like, oh, we're out of time. Let's just do those one and twos. And then they never actually fully understand the whole standard, even though you may have taught the standard. You didn't do it to its full intent. Is that?
And
Bingo.
Yeah. And, and the depth of knowledge, like, knowledge is the, 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 the first tier, but then it moves into skill type things. So things that we want our students to be able to do, not just know.
And explain and create.
Board, do you have questions? Any other questions for teacher leaders?
I just want to say you guys are rock stars. Way to go.
I've heard stories of each one of them and their teams, both from the cadre in August and from the one two weeks ago. So Leslie, any closing thoughts?
I've got a quick question.
Go ahead.
So I heard Taryn mention at Excellence, what did the rest of you think? Similar experience? What was your view on their program and element?
As a long-term trainer, I enjoyed them as trainers. And so they, they kept things moving. They were interactive. They were funny. And yet they, they knew what they were doing. So there was a depth of knowledge that was there that was really appreciated too. And the way that they brought it about was really palpable and easy to interact with. Even though, even though some of this stuff is, you know, it's laborious. I mean, it's, it's going to take some work and it takes some real thought process. They did a great job, I felt, of breaking it down. And as, as trainers, I thought they did great. I enjoyed it.
I felt very comfortable as a student because that's what we were. So as being a student and just all of these posters and different, different ways that we were assessed throughout the time. And the training was geared towards how we answered these questions. Like if we would have came in and said, we're all expert at assessment, then they probably would have dealt with us a little bit differently. Whereas if you're at the other end where you don't know and you recognize that, I think that helped them tailor the training and the snacks and.
Well, that's an example of the formative assessments that they were taking along with, to see where the understanding was. So checking for understanding, where do we need to focus on for the following day? The group did well at this. And the other thing is, you know, as far as the actual facility and the snacks and everything, the key is listening to feedback. So we need to model giving the feedback, but also receiving the feedback because that's how trust is built, that you're responsive. And so the feedback loop never ends with adults to adults or adults to kids or kids to kids, kids to adults. The feedback loop is always a two-way. Any other questions?
I just wanted to, to feedback on what Clarissa was saying about the, the training and how the trainers adapted to the room. And there was a lot of work to be done. And to me, it sounds like this is, this is how you'd want, I'd want my students to experience learning. So it's like, we're doing this learning here, you guys are doing it, and then you're taking it to the kids. And I really appreciate that, you know, full circle.
Rolling out this, the assessment cadres and these, these assessments now, is it monumental change in our district?
Right.
And, and so we've talked about a lot of the wonderful things that are coming out of this. And I think it's, it's, it's all amazing work that you guys and our district has done. But I'm going to, I'm going to ask a critique here. So what could we have done better in rolling this out to all of our teachers or even the ones that have gone through the two cadres? I'll ask, I mean, I'll open to you guys, to Scott, Leslie, what could we have done better?
I think maybe a clearer trajectory of where we were going. Because a lot of times, even though we're like, okay, this is what we're doing, it's hard to buy into the process and doing it that way when you don't see the why at the end.
The what's in it for me kind of thing?
Yeah, we've had a timeline, be like, okay, this year we're doing this, this and this. But like even when we did unit mapping, we're like, okay, you're doing this to prepare for your assessment cadre. Well, what? Just not fully understanding, not saying that it wasn't there, but just it would help with a lot of buy-in. I think also if there was a way where we could have maybe done more of this as an entire district instead of little tiny cadres. So like the very beginning when we were in the gym at the high school and we were able to go over to the middle school team. So the math team that I'm in, we have a K-18 and then there's a middle school team that work independently. And then we came together at the cadre. But having those teams together plus the high school teams together, that's powerful. And then you can get on the same page instead of just feeling like, yeah, we got this, we understand this. And then we get to the next level and like, ooh. It's like, for example, the unit mapping, we did all our targets. And so our group did our targets, middle school did their targets. We liked it. We went to this assessment cadre and they're like, okay, now use your targets. But which ones? We were in different groups. Unfortunately, our groups worked together so that was able to be seamless. But I think it would help with buying if there was just a better trajectory of the whys.
I think that not necessarily my thoughts around like leading up to it, but then following through on things is fidelity to it in the long term. In my experience, sometimes in education, good ideas come out, sometimes great ideas come out. And within a year or two, they're forgotten or they're left behind. Or we see like right now, I'm sure there is an exuberant amount of resources that went into this whole process and are going into this process. And, and you see like a turn in the economy. So I was in education in, you know, 2007, eight, nine, and when we were laying teachers off left and right. And I think that when you find things that, that are important and are making a difference, that you have to, that it's beneficial at times to commit to it, to see the process through. And so my hope would be that all, I mean, all this is great, but I don't want, I hope that's not another educational thing that we're like three years from now, you know, we did this thing, it was kind of cool, it helped out a little bit. What was that thing we did again? So, so I think that the, that there's real importance to continue to have fidelity to it and to think about the things that really make it work and work well. And I think that hearing this group talk about it, the, being able to share in it together has been a really powerful thing. And so if there's something worth fighting for in it, I think it's continuing to fight for teams to have the availability and the opportunity to come together and collaborate. Because those things end up making the biggest difference for our students in the long term. So that's just my thoughts.
And I think I can piggyback on what you said about just that collaboration between grade levels. What we noticed at the high school level with freshmen, it's like they come in and trying to figure out what the kids actually know. And just building that or bridging that gap in between elementary school and high school so that when the kids come in, everybody's on the same page. So I look forward to, I feel like we're, we're almost there where we can make that connection just from eighth grade to ninth grade and make it flawless. So that's my hope is that we'll continue this work to get there. And I think I was at a meeting, equity team meeting, and Scott presented the, the whole purpose of the unit mapping and the projection maps and why we're doing it. And that made so much sense. And in that moment, I'm like, okay, I'm on board 100%. This is why we're doing it. So that everybody comes in and we're all on the same page. And we don't have to start fresh with catching up. And someday we'll get there. But I feel like this work is going to be pivotal in that.
I would say my biggest thing that is just the time aspect again. You never have enough time. And when I did the assessment cadre, we worked in our fifth grade team with myself in kind of the K through eight buildings. But we also partnered up with some fifth grade teachers from Robert Frost at the assessment cadre. But unfortunately, I've never been able to touch base with them again because we're just in different PLC groups in our PLC times, you know, we're in two different places. So moving forward, it would be nice to be able to get with them again and have that opportunity. But again, it's, you know, time and making it all work.
Thanks again for tuning in.
Thank you.
And for all your hard work. Not just for coming tonight, mostly for the hard work.
Well, and that's the, that's the thing that I hope that resonates with all of you, board, is how hard this work is. Nothing in the world worth of any value is easy to get. And if we want what we've never had, we've got to do what we've never done. And it is hard to take a step forward into something that is very unfamiliar. Everybody has a different level of understanding, a different DOK around assessment. But we're actually diving into the same work together. And if we can make it work here in Silver Falls with the crazy configurations that we have here, because PLCs are not specific to buildings, that is wholly unique in Silver Falls. And so that's another. And so, that's another thing that we're really grappling with. The time issue is absolutely key, it's our most precious commodity. But this is worth it, and you know this flywheel, and I've said it a million times, and I'm gonna say it again. Growth is hard, but it's essential. And without tension pushing on that flywheel, we're never gonna get to a sustainable peace, being able to bring it in-house. So, we're driving this instruction as an entire school district. This is really what the work is all about, at its quintessence, is trying to build capacity and learn together. The last thing I wanted to say is a little word on the leadership, because this is new work for our leaders as well. And so, they're jumping in, leaders are jumping in right with our PLCs. And they're learning together, which I think is actually a beautiful thing. It really builds trust when we're all involved in the work and we all have something to contribute. And we all, and the difference in our contributions has to do with our different roles. So, I hope that you feel that as well.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Feel free to say you, all right? Thank you all very much. You're very welcome.
All right, so, next on the agenda is the settlement agreement. And I think that Dan's going to lead us on that one.
Yeah, so, we're bringing a settlement agreement before you this evening for your, we're recommending its approval. And so, I'd like to talk through a few of the facts around this and why we're recommending the approval of the settlement agreement. First, I'll throw some numbers out to you here. So, a big factor in the settlement agreement is PACE, their contribution to, as you know, the number is fifty-seven thousand five hundred. And PACE is contributing thirty-five thousand to that. So, over half of this is coming from PACE. And so, that is a big factor in that. I do wanna throw a few other numbers your way. So, that makes twenty-two thousand five hundred coming out of the general fund for the settlement agreement. There were some other questions related to kind of total cost of this. So, I'm just gonna give you a few other numbers here. So, Mr. Patrick's salary in the last school year was around ninety-four thousand dollars, so that was a question that was asked. And then, when we had Mr. Duffy take over the high school band program, his salary was around thirty-nine thousand dollars in salaries. So, that was, it was information requested for that. And attorney fees in this, from December through September, were just under nineteen thousand dollars in attorney fees on this. So, and so, I'm gonna readdress that issue here in just a moment. So, but I wanted you to know that the settlement amount, a big factor, going back to the first thing I threw out there, was that PACE was covering thirty-five thousand of the fifty-seven thousand. The other factors leading to this recommendation is that all tort claims, arbitration grievances are all settled as a matter of this. So, these factors all go away. So, that was a huge factor in this. And going back to the legal fees is that, you know, our portion of the, of that settlement amount, we believe that we would have incurred in legal costs had we run this through the entire arbitration process and through fair dismissal. Of that nineteen thousand dollars in legal fees from December through September, half of that was probably incurred during the July, the most recent last two months, all the buildup towards those last two events. These, so, if that gives you an idea of what we would have possibly incurred through arbitration and fair dismissal, we feel like that we would have incurred those costs through those lengthy processes. That doesn't include the administrative time, loss of time for our high school administration, in addition to district leadership, the amount of time that it would have taken them, distraction from their work in preparing for fair dismissal. And finally, I think it's really important to the impact to former students that would have been called to testify at fair dismissal for something they didn't ask for, and that could have impacted their current jobs or schoolings if they would have been called to testify at either arbitration or fair dismissal. And we felt like saving them from that impact was a, what needed to be definitely considered, taken into consideration. So, those are the details, those are the most compelling reasons that we have to ask that you vote to approve the settlement agreement. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and certainly, it's your discussion topic.
Are there questions first, before we discuss?
Thank you for sharing the numbers. I think it's good for the community and everyone to hear those, because anytime a process like this unfolds, there's so many different factors and departments that are involved, and I don't think people realize that. So, I think it's good that they understand all the different facets. The other one, though, when I was reading through this, and perhaps, let me get my glasses, it says something about phone calls only being directed to you, and if you're not there, then someone from SFAI.
So, if, yes, so, any questions related to Mr. Patrick's employment with the district are directed to me?
Okay.
And in the event that I'm not available, or would have left the district, or something along those lines, then SFA, we would have a kind of an appointed person that met their approval.
Oh, okay.
Other questions for Dan? All right, let's open it up for discussions. Anybody have comments that they would like to address to the board?
I just wanted to, partly to Dan as well, but I really appreciate the priority put on the well-being of the students. In my mind, that's one of, one, or maybe even the most important issue here, is their well-being and not putting them something, through something that would be difficult, at the very least. So, I appreciate you all making that a priority. Thank you.
Well, I'll add a few thoughts here. One, it's, it kind of feels funny to talk about approving a settlement for something for which you feel intrinsically like needed to be settled, right? So, it sort of has the feeling of something, I don't know, there's often a narrative around it that's, you know, oh, well, you settled because you thought you were gonna lose. I don't think that's the case. I think Dan presented a really clear case for why we're doing it. It had to do with priorities, it had to do with cost, students, all these reasons, right? They're very compelling to me. I plan, at least as of now, barring somebody changing my mind, to probably vote in favor of said settlement. The, but I also wanna just say, I feel like when this issue came before us, we gave it a lot of time, of our time, and asked really good questions, and were able to hear responses and have discussion. It was all an executive session, that was not our choice, I just wanna be clear about that, too. The fact that this isn't coming out wasn't because we're trying to hide it. And that that conversation that occurred compelled me to vote the way I did, and I stand by that vote a hundred percent. And I don't feel like, in any way, shape, or form, we made the wrong choice. And even given this settlement, I feel like we have made the right choice now. So, I guess those are some of the things I'll share for now.
It's nice that you mentioned about your vote. I feel the same way, I feel good about my vote. And I really do believe that sometimes things can be worked out, but I, it seems to me like this had gone through quite the process, and that it had come to the end of that. And so, it had to be further settled with two attorneys at the table. And I don't, I don't think there's anybody that walks away feeling good, because everybody gave so much of themselves. I mean, it hurts somewhere. And that's what's so difficult about things like this, is that everybody walks away just feeling a little bruised and hurt, and questions that may never be answered, only because I think as human beings, we question, you know? And we want some type of, we wanna be soothed with an answer that we, there might not be an answer for. So, I think down deep, though, it concerns me now how the teachers were following this and what that might do with SFA and bargaining, that's where my concern is.
Well, I share the concern, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to just sort of make some of the points I'm making now. I feel, I don't feel like a mistake was made, I just wanna be clear about that.
Yeah, and I'll add to a couple of comments that have been said. What Janet said first and foremost, that, you know, our number one job is the well-being of our students in our district, and that this settlement allows that, to Dan's point, that those kids, and maybe now they're even young adults, depending on their age, don't have to take time off their schooling, don't have to take time out of their jobs to testify. So, again, coming back to the well-being of kids is number one, and that's our number one job. And so, I, too, Jonathan, am in agreement with this settlement, and voting in favor of it. But does not change my vote one bit as well, so.
Other comments?
I'll just say that in my experience, you know, almost all litigation ends up settling, you know, outside of a final decision by an arbitrator, or by a panel, or a judge, or jury. And so, you know, to my thinking, it's typically a business decision, and it's a prudent business decision, I think, that we've got here and we're faced with. I hope that the word settlement and settlement agreement is, has a little bit broader meaning in that this matter is settled for everyone. And there isn't, and I think there's a lot of value in that as well, just having the issue, you know, put to bed. I guess I was a little disappointed that we don't have some non-disparagement language or something like that, but I don't know that that's even possible in an agreement like this. But I just hope for all the parties that, you know, we just move on and on to better and different things.
Tom?
No, I really don't have anything to add. I mean, I appreciate the discussion, I think that Jonathan's comments really hit home for me. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's really thoughtful discussion, and agree that with Janet's point about, you know, having folks have to revisit some things in a testifying situation, you know? Being able to avoid that, I think, is a good thing for our district, and also agree that it's a business decision. And I do hope that everybody can move forward based on the approval of this agreement. And with that, I will take a motion.
Are we taking action on that later?
Oh, yeah, my bad. Thank you. All right, discussion item, policy BBF. And this was my idea, so, I will present on this, I guess. Basically, you know, it was just, for me, I hadn't revisited these in a while, and I thought it would be good for us to just take time to read through and maybe pick out one or two that we wanted to make further comment on, just as a refresher. So, that's really all of my motive. My question is, do you think we should read this? There are twenty-two points allowed, or should we read it by ourselves and then make comments?
Can we read it quietly and then make comments?
Does everybody agree with that? Okay.
Okay, good.
Can you show me a finger or a hand signal, like, how many minutes you need? Is everybody done? Good?
I'm good.
Good? Okay, all right. Who would like to start by just bringing up one and throwing it at us?
Well, I'll throw out number five. That, to me, is, in this board and others that I've sat on, has been one of the most important things, which is recognizing that a decision by the quorum vote is the final decision of the board, and it should be supported by all members. I know sometimes we don't all agree, but once that happens, it seems like nothing, seems like when that doesn't happen, it's just really destructive, so. Just a reminder.
I think that one's super critical. It's probably one of the hardest ones on the whole list.
Yep.
And it's really important.
I like, I think it goes hand in hand with number five and number four, respecting the rights of other board members to have opinions and ideas which differ maintaining decorum and modeling civil discourse. I was talking with a community member the other day about this, that, you know, I'm really proud to serve with the other six of you, because we've had to navigate some pretty tough, tough subjects over the last, I'll say, since I came on the board a year plus ago, year and three months, if my math is correct, year and four months ago. And we tackled some tough stuff, coming out of COVID, masking, and, you know, concealed carry in schools, you know, personnel matters. And where we all don't agree, and we have very passionate opinions one way or another, I think what the nice thing about it is, is we've made our cases, we've taken votes, and at the end of the day, we've walked away, and it's been professional. And we've modeled that above all for our students. So, I circled that here, you know, in my pre-reading, just because I feel like we've done a good job of that. And again, I'm proud to serve on this board with all of you because of that, so.
I will throw out number, or throw in number seven, understand the chain of command and refer problems or complaints to the proper administrative office. I think when, when we're sitting in these roles, we're clearly committed to problem solving and to being able to serve our community. And so, when someone comes to you with a problem, the natural instinct is to say, well, let's try to figure that out, or let's solve it. And so, it can be very tempting to sort of start getting into it. And as somebody who also works for a board, I always remind myself and remind others that you're, the people you hire can't do what they need to do if they don't know about the problems that are out there. And it really does undermine their ability to manage if you're swooping in to try to solve a problem that is not yours to solve. So, it's very tempting, because we're all trying to, our all intentions are good to answer questions from our community, and it can be really hard to say, you need to call a superintendent, or you need to talk to your principal, because you feel like you're just kind of like handing it off. But that's what we need to do, because we, when we're in those positions, we really respect the courtesy of being able to handle problems that are ours to solve, so.
I think sometimes our community members, when we've been reached out to that,
Right.
or reached out by them for that, and you say, look, I'm gonna refer you on to whomever, oh, you're blowing me off. No, we're not blowing you off. We're letting our, you know, teachers teach, are we letting our principals be leaders? And we're letting our administrators in the district office administrate. That's their job, that's chain of command. And it does take some educating sometimes of our community, you know?
Yeah.
But help them educate that chain of command, and that's, it's a chain of responsibility, I think we've changed the wording to, excuse me, to make sure that that's, it's important, and to let them lead.
Any others?
I think eleven's important. Board members will receive information that's confidential, cannot be shared. I know, uh, there's been a lot of times when we've received some information, personnel related otherwise, right? That, that really, it's critical, uh, to the, I guess integrity of what we do, that that information stay where it belongs. And, uh, I don't know, I, 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 I just think it's really important.
Yeah. Any others?
Well, I, um, gonna circle back to the one that Owen started with. That was five, right?
Yeah.
And I think that, um, you know, we did work through a really tough issue with the concealed carry. And, um, we clarified our process a bit during that timeframe. And I think that it was way easier for me to be able to stand by the decision, right? To report the decision if the process was carried out in a, you know, with integrity. So I think that, to me, one of the big things that I've seen, um, this board progress since I, you know, when I came on board is in that, uh, procedures and protocols and, uh, process. Because if we feel like our process is thorough and, um, fair, then we are able to, um, you know, feel like democracy has, has happened, you know, we can trust.
Any others before we finish?
You know, I was looking at one of them that talked about the public comment and how we're supposed to respect public comment. And, you know, lately it's been easy. There hasn't been that much public comment, you know? Um, so I hope in some ways that the public does, um, check into, you know, agenda items and, uh, weigh in. I, I don't, there are times when I've been approached, well, I didn't know you guys were gonna discuss this. And I'm like, well, it was on, you know what I mean? It was on board.
I've heard.
I mean, I, yeah, and it's clearly posted. So I hope the public, uh, you know, knows that it's accessible and that they can read it. And, uh, if they have a comment, they, they have every right, you know, to share. So that's, that, I was just reading that and I did chuckle at it. I thought, well, if we had more from the public than that. Not that we don't do it already, but it's just the numbers, you know, are low. So, there we go.
When things are going well, you don't get a lot of public comment. Things are, are problematic, uh, you're standing your own way. So.
I think I like this better than some of our very full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it does make me wonder though, how we can engage the public a little better because trust in that bond, for instance, is going to be built not only on trust in our fiscal, uh, judgment, but trust in that the school district is doing a lot of things right, which includes our curriculum and our leadership training and all of that. And so the extent to which our community understands all of those things is going to build excitement and energy and support for new facilities. Uh, and without it, it just becomes a money decision. And there's no passion there, right? Then it's like, well, nobody wants to pay more property taxes. Like if that was, if that's what you're weighing, then of course you're not gonna vote for it. So clearly we have to be able to build, um, some engagement and some involvement and, and, and build folks their, their understanding and knowledge of what the district is doing in a positive way as we start thinking about that bond. Because it's gonna be pretty multifaceted. You really wanna build that general faith and confidence in, in the board and how the board operates, in our administration, in our schools. You know, I think our people love our schools. I think we're finally maybe coming to the point where they can see that the board is operating professionally and with integrity. That's my hope. So it's all important.
I'm really glad you're on the, uh, bond advisory committee, both of you. But those, those are the kinds of things I'm assuming that, that we will address as we move forward. Um, especially with those partners, because they'll be able to guide us with that. Because I agree, that's a huge piece connecting with the public.
So is there gonna be a field trip in regards to looking at the old high school and stuff with the board members, I guess, in hard hats or whatever and going in? I mean, it would be interesting if we were able to film that. I mean, to see us in there, I think is important. I mean, other than just sitting, but I, maybe that's saved for another committee. I think it'd be fun to have a field trip actually.
Yeah.
Walking, showing and demonstrating what's really going on in that age and time.
Yeah, I want, um, there was somebody on Facebook recently who was, um, making a comment about when they thought it was time for us to have a bond. And I thought, I sure wish I had access to that video of the water coming down.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and like, people don't know, they just don't know. And so we've gotta, we've gotta build the pathways for them to be able to, to see why our students, you know, are, is overdue. It really is overdue. All right. Well, um, thank you for, um, yeah, I just, I appreciate, um, just being reminded about all of these.
It's a good exercise.
Okay, now, I'll take a motion about our action item tonight, which I think the motion is written into the agenda.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the settlement agreement between Silver Falls School District and Frank, Frank Petrick and the Silver Falls Education Association.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the settlement agreement between the Silver Falls School District and Frank Petrick and the Silver Falls Education Association. Any further discussion? All right, call the roll please Debbie.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right. And, um, unless there's somebody who wants to, um, oppose, I think I'm gonna say, meeting adjourned.